...way through the speaker system.
Welcome, everybody. I want to call to order the Village Board Committee of the Whole Meeting for Thursday, July 20. Let's do a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Here.
Trustee Listner?
Here.
Trustee Meolopoulos?
Here.
Trustee Underdunk?
Here.
Trustee Rubin?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
President Rowan?
Here. We have a quorum, including two members who are remote. In compliance with the village's policies to participate remotely, trustees Hallwax and Rubin have requested to do so remotely for tonight's meeting. Is there any objection to their participation remotely? Okay. We're live streaming the meeting tonight, and the video recording will be available on the village's YouTube channel. The first item-
Trustee, oh, sorry, President Rowan, before we move on, just a note for the board, if, as you're speaking, and this is true for anybody speaking in public, if you can make sure to try to project into the microphones, just so that we make sure everybody who's on Zoom and on the recording itself can hear you. Thank you.
In addition, for the audience, I'm going to ask you to identify yourself when you speak, so we know who you are. First item on the agenda is public comment, but that's for only non-agenda items. If, when we get to the agenda items, which I think most people are here for, we'll call on you for that. Are there any public comments tonight on non-agenda items? Okay. The next item on the agenda is discussion of traffic planning study for Hofelder Road Corridor, and I'll ask our Public Works Director, and I say that with some trepidation, Dave Mow.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Before I introduce the village engineer for a brief presentation, I wanted to make a couple of introductory comments. The engineering division function of the village has worked in partnership with the Public Safety Department on any and all traffic safety inquiries in the 30-plus years that I've been here. And that's from as simple as parking restrictions or lack thereof, to intersection controls, to stop sign requests, such as the discussion we're going to have tonight. Each and every one of those requests has been taken seriously in my tenure. Some are, obviously are more comprehensive and more major than others. I would note that the study that we're going to present tonight, this is as comprehensive a traffic study as has been performed in the time I've been here. And I think appropriately so. While the process that we follow, which is consistent with what we've always done, and that is to use the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD, as our guide, has been consistently applied over the last three decades. When we first heard from the Hofelder neighbors about concerns, you know, a year ago, next month, we initiated a review internally. You'll hear a little bit more about that in a moment. But we understood from the start that there was, these were concerns, and from our own experience, they were legitimate. I think part of the reason we made as deep a dive as we did when we engaged Gaywald Hamilton, because we wanted to fully understand the depth, the gravity of the issues out there. Like I said, this has gone far beyond any third-party review we've ever done. And I think rightly so. And this probably will help guide the village, certainly the engineering and public safety components of our traffic engineering internal team for the future, because we don't have great data for each of our major corridors and our collector roadways. And so I think there'll be a lot of takeaways from this in addition to what's going to be presented tonight. The other thing I would note, there's been some comment about how comments made, and I understand, we fully understand the passion and the concern of the neighbors. There's been some reference to staff turning a blind ear to certain things, and that is anything but the case. None of the recommendations, either in the staff study or in the broader and more detailed Gaywald Hamilton study, are off the table. We've made some recommendations. It has elevated to this point tonight where we want to engage the board and get some feedback from the board, because some of what's being recommended is new ground for us. These are things that are new policy, that warrant a broader conversation, because they'll have longer-term impacts on decisions we make, right or wrong, on the community, the larger community, not just the Hofelder Road corridor. So with that, I want to introduce village engineer James Teague, who will present a brief overview of the study. Those that are in the audience heard a little bit longer version of this a week ago, but we wanted to at least frame this with how we've gotten to where we are tonight, and then we'll proceed from there. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teague.
Good evening, President Rowan and board members. As Dave mentioned, I'm going to dive into an abbreviated version of the presentation that we had with the residents last week. Wanted to start with some background and a timeline of what has transpired related to this study and the process. Back in August 2022, residents raised safety concerns regarding speed on Hofelder. From that point, you know, village started collecting data, conducting our collection process. Through this process, we look to identify the problems and then evaluate steps that can be taken to address those problems. Through the in-house study, you know, we identified some signage updates, upgrades, some striping adjustments, and reviewed installation of crosswalks within the corridor there. In winter of 2022, we provided, shared the results with the residents who had contacted us, and then we conducted a resident meeting later that winter. From feedback of that meeting, we proceeded to engage with Gaywald Hamilton Associates, GHA, to look at a more comprehensive traffic study. Throughout that time, our public safety has also been enhancing enforcement out there, increased presence. And, you know, as we mentioned, we had a follow-up meeting last week, following the findings of the GHA report. So Gaywald Hamilton, I wanted to start with their scope of study and who they are. You know, they're a consulting engineering firm in the Chicagoland area, have decades of work, and in the past have provided traffic studies for the village on other areas. But as Dave mentioned, this was the most comprehensive study they have completed for the village. Within that study, they did a comprehensive data collection, including speed monitoring on the pavement, some recording cameras on the corners, worked collaboratively with the village to look at our previous studies, previous data, accident information, both from the village and IDOT. So they took a comprehensive look, and were tasked with providing a technical report to summarize those findings. With the speed monitoring, they had installed placement, they had placed speed monitoring devices on the pavement, three different areas of the Hofelder corridor that generally split things up into three different segments on Hofelder. This table outlines some of the data gathered from that speed analysis. You'll see the average and the 85th percentile speeds are outlined here. Those are outlined because those are the data points and analysis points that are used for traffic studies and speed studies. So they are shown on here. You can see in each corridor, each of those three little segments, they are higher than the posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour there. In addition to this information, you know, the speed monitoring found one segment from Orchard to Sunset to have 93% of the vehicles exceed the posted speed limit. So 93% of the vehicles that drove through there were above the 25 mile per hour. All of this is alarming to staff, and it leads to, you know, our previous recommendations of improvements to make out there, traffic calming methods to implement. And then it'll lead into the recommendations or ideal outcomes from Gaywald Hamilton's study there. Another portion of the residents' requests were for multi-way stop control, so all way stops on all four legs of the intersections at Hofelder and Sunset, and then also Hofelder and, or three legs of Hofelder and Orchard. As Dave mentioned, the MUTCD is a nationwide guideline adopted by the state of Illinois and by our local code. It sets out the framework for the warrants of when to implement multi-way stops. Village staff looked at this, and as well did GHA. And in reviewing the warrants, the intersections did not meet the warrants for all way stops. Some of the traffic calming measures that were part of the Gaywald Hamilton study included recommendations for speed hump or speed table installations. These would be physical objects to slow down traffic, reduce the speed. Additional alternatives were narrowing lane widths, and then also providing speed feedback signs. One thing I neglected to mention on the previous slide was the use of stop signs for speed control is not recommended by the MUTCD. So that's why we are looking at alternative methods to lower speeds through the corridor. Speed humps are, I've got a couple photos here to give you an idea. These are, speed humps and speed tables are different than speed bumps. Speed bumps are things you would see on private property, typically about a foot in length, and a very drastic change of grade that you really feel in your vehicles. Speed humps are the next step, so they're a longer length, more of a gentler transition, but still has that change of grade to alternate, to alter the driver's speed. Speed tables are the final iteration of that, with a longer length, can have a longer flat area on the top, and less of a grade change over that length. Another outcome of the study was looking at pedestrian crossings throughout the corridor. The study found, it recommended a pedestrian crossing at Hofelder and Sunset. It suggested looking at a potential crossing at Hofelder and Orchard Lane, and then said even further, if further crosswalks are looked at, at Pinewood and Hofelder, that that would be a possible. Pedestrian crossings do require some construction, pavement markings, signage updates. So there are more than just putting down crosswalk striping on the pavement. So to summarize, the consultant study outcomes, GHA's study outcomes, looked at the multi-way stop, did not find that it met the warrants at either intersection for an all-way multi-way stop. The study did recommend traffic calming measures be implemented through speed bumps or speed tables. They can consider a temporary installation, as shown in those photos, or they could be a more permanent constructed installation. Speed feedback signage was also recommended to have permanent installations out there. And then additionally, recommended a pedestrian crossing improvement at Sunset and Hofelder. So the reason we are bringing these up for discussion here is because each of these items has policy implications to the village and village-wide. Following our typical process and review of the MUTC guidelines, these intersections do not meet the warrants for a multi-way stop, which would be a change of policy if one were to be installed. Looking at traffic calming measures, speed humps and speed tables, those are not installed anywhere in town. So that would be a variance from our typical policy to install those. And then additionally, with the pedestrian crossing improvements at uncontrolled intersections, you'd look at larger construction than we typically do for crossing improvements.
And just to piggyback on that, I think, just a commentary on the MUTCD. As I said, we use that, and we're not alone. I mean, any municipality generally uses that as their guide. But I would note that ultimately, as the local jurisdiction, you know, we, the village, can make the final decision. The warrants identified, and the traffic control warrants that are identified for either signals or stop signs are should, not must. And so the village does have the ability, even with a sound engineering study, which both the staff's report and GHA's report, is that. To make a decision based on external factors, there's an engineering judgment component of the MUTCD that would allow us to be able to accommodate all way stops at either of these intersections, if that's the ultimate direction that the board chooses. And so with that, I think we're open to any questions from the board at this point. President Rowan?
Thanks for the presentations, which I heard, I was at the meeting before, so I've heard them, but the other, the board members have not. The way I think we should proceed, I will say a little bit about sort of what I think, because I went to the meeting, and then see what the board members think. We've not had a chance to talk about this. We're subject to the Open Meetings Act, so we don't get to get together at all unless we have a formal meeting, which we're doing now. And then after the audience, who we appreciate you came here, you know, we know you care, and we care too. Once you've heard what we're thinking, then you can, you know, we'll open it up for comments from the audience. We have our, you know, it's a public meeting, so we have rules. Everybody gets three minutes. If you're speaking for a group, you get a little bit more. And we'll, you know, we want to hear you out. This is a Committee of the Whole Meeting, so we don't pass ordinances or anything like, we can't. But what we can do, to the extent that something is subject to action by the village manager rather than the board as a whole, is give the manager direction. So with that, let me say where I am leaning, and then see what the board members think. And then, you know, I hope you guys will be okay with that, but you may not be, and then you can have at us. So, you know, here's what I think. A, we get it. We understand why you're here. We understand why you care about it. And we care about it, too. We do. That doesn't, in general, you know, we're all volunteers. We think we're here to help. We recognize that not everybody's going to think we're helping all the time, because we can't always do what everybody wants, but we're trying. So if I were living on Hofelder, I'd be in the audience, too. I actually live, I live on Long Meadow, so I'm at Hofelder all the time, all the time. I know that nobody pays attention when they're on Hofelder to the stop sign at Wesley. I know that, because people almost crash into me every day. I also recognize that these are hard problems, because we're down eight public safety officers. So we can't have a public safety officer camped out at Hofelder in three or four different spots all the time. We just can't do it. So, let me, I attended your meeting. I left after about an hour. So I wasn't there when somebody said, as I heard someone said, and I saw it written, that we should make Hofelder one-way street. We're not going to do that. I heard two serious ideas. One was we need to slow it down. Clearly correct. I mean, clearly correct. So we have to try to figure out how to do that. And the other one was to reduce the traffic. I'm less excited about that idea, because, for one, based on our, you know, people have said they thought the traffic has increased over time. We've not been able to confirm that. We just, we have not been able to confirm that. We, the last time we looked at traffic was back in 1995, and at the time, there was actually a little bit more traffic than we counted here. My, so we think the traffic is the same. It's hard to evaluate whether people were speeding then. I assume they were. But I'm less excited about trying to reduce the traffic on Hofelder, because it has to go somewhere. And if we make, you know, if we make Hofelder into some, a road that no one wants to be on, you know, I think that would to a certain extent satisfy some of the people on Hofelder. But that means those folks are on Sunset or Dundee, and those residents aren't here today, because they don't know that they're in the bullseye. But we have to think about that. So I don't think we should try to make changes to reduce the traffic on Hofelder. I don't, you know, Hofelder is one of the main arteries in this village. Sheridan, Green Bay, Dundee, Forest Way, Vernon, and Hofelder, they're the main arteries. And if we try to change that, all we're going to do is send more cars down one of our other main arteries. In this case, I think it would be Sunset and Dundee, and I don't think that's appropriate. So how can we slow down traffic in a reasonable way? We're a non-home rule community, which means we can't do anything without talking to our lawyer, who's here. We have engaged our lawyer to look to see whether we could do remote speed control or remote stop sign control. Because if we could, we would do it. But we can't. State law only allows Chicago to do that, nobody else. So we just can't do that. So what can we do? Well, the first thing is, we're, and we're talking to our public safety folks about this, we're going to increase, and we're going to alert the community that we're increasing the speed control of Hofelder. So there are going to be more tickets. And the hope is, and we'll see, that that will slow everything down. People don't like getting tickets. But we can't be there all the time. And probably don't need to be there all the time. It's annoying if somebody's going 70 miles an hour at 3:00 in the morning. That's bad, and we'll probably check sometimes, but it's less dangerous, because we're not out there either. So what can we do? I, the experts say that we don't qualify for stop signs. And the experts say we could think about speed bumps or speed tables. We don't have speed tables anywhere in Glencoe. I don't see them really anywhere in the North Shore. I mean, in Winnetka, they have some speed bumps on private roads, but otherwise, we don't see them. You may think you want us to try them now, but they're noisy, and they're, so I just, I personally don't think we should move in that direction yet. If the things we are, I'm going to suggest we try, don't work, then we may have to go to Plan B. But nobody's done, our other villages haven't done it. We haven't done it. There's no end to it once we start. And so what I think we should consider doing is stop signs. You know, Hofelder's not that long. But I, you know, a stop sign at Orchard, even though there aren't, you know, there's only one, Orchard's the only street that's coming in there, but a stop sign, a three-way stop at Orchard, and perhaps a crosswalk, we have to think about that, and then a four-way stop at Sunset. And the hope, and with crosswalks, and with additional signage. And we will see if that works. And, you know, if it doesn't work, if it doesn't satisfy us, then we're going to keep looking, because we want, we want people in Glencoe safe. And I, I was on the village board 40 years ago, and I thought then that it was really dangerous that people were crossing Dundee Road by the Botanic Garden with their bicycles, and people were, you know, people were, I thought they were going to get creamed and be investigated with the state. And they said it didn't qualify for a stoplight because of whatever the guidelines, just as Hofelder doesn't qualify for stop signs. And I basically said I did not want to see anybody splatter across Dundee Road, and we put it up. And I'm sure many of you hate that, because you're fine, and you're driving along, and you have to stop. But my goal, and I think probably our goal, is we want to make you safe. We want to do it in a reasonable way. And so what I suggest to the board is that stop signs, two of them, one at Orchard, and then a four-way stop at Sunset. And then we should also put in crosswalks. And I, we want to, I want this to be safe. You know, sometimes people blow through stop signs, sometimes they blow through crosswalks. And so we have to think about what makes the most sense, and then we'll look and see if it works. So anyway, that's my suggestion. And I'll ask other board members what they think. And then, I'll ask your residents.
So, President, can I just clarify one thing?
Yeah, yeah.
So the-
This is Stuart Weiss.
Stuart Weiss, village attorney. Just to clarify, communities outside of Chicago can have red light cameras. They're allowed in Cook County and the Collar Counties, but they have to be a red light. It has to be a signal. You can't have a stop sign camera, because it has to be able to detect that you've crossed into the intersection when there is actually a light. And then speed control cameras, only three entities are allowed to do speed control cameras. IDOT for their roads, the Illinois State Toll Highway Authority, and much to my chagrin as a Chicago resident, the city of Chicago. So.
Okay. So let me open it up to board members, including our two remote board members. Gail?
I'm happy to start. I think you made some excellent recommendations. Well, I hope that some of you are aware of the traffic and the speed laws, and I'm looking at it.
Anybody have a, and again, also our remote board members, anybody else want to say something? Georgia?
President Rowan, this is Joe. Real quick, I align with what you said.
Thank you, trustee Hallwax. Trustee Meolopoulos.
I just wanted to ask, we have, and all the residents are here, the majority of them are here, but we talked to the neighbors directly, adjacent to the, ask them what they, I was wondering if we've talked to the neighbors directly adjacent to the-
Oh, you've been canceled.
Just wanted to ask the staff- Just wanted to ask the staff, David, um, if the neighbors directly adjacent to be recommended or proposed, stop signs have been, you know, are they here and are they on board with the recommendation? I just, yeah, that was it, thank you.
So I see the officers are here and there at Sunset and they have my condolences because they had to be here earlier in the year for other stuff. So, a, a, and we've, you know, and all those communications we've received, the implication is that everybody's on board. I'm not, I'm not positive everybody's on board with speed bumps or speed tables, which people will be, if we did it, will be listening to, um, end of the night, but with stop signs, you know, I-
I only, I only ask because stop signs are unwarranted ones do add to noise pollution and air pollution, so that there, there are other impacts to them, but I, I do agree it's, it's a good solution and just wanted to make sure that that was-
I, you know, I can't swear that we have everybody. Yes?
We have, uh-
Tell us who you are.
Uh, I have to, uh, I have to share.
I'm Brett.
Uh, I wanted to address the question about whether the neighbors are on board. We have conducted a small survey of which 23 respondents, um, on the street have, um, sent their responses to. This was shared with the board, uh, in a form of presentation beforehand. Um, at, four out of five proposed measures that our neighbor community came up with have received overwhelming support, of which, uh, number one was increasing the automated speed monitors. Uh, number two was, um, constant monitoring and increasing the police presence, um, speed tables as well as stop signs and crosswalks. And then the last one did not receive support, but also apparently we can do it, which is the automated enforcement. So I just wanted to speak to that and you can refer to that brochure, um, for neighbor consensus.
Thanks and, and thank you.
Thank you.
And I jumped on board, which I, you know, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Underdunk.
I, um, in my training as a urban planner, I have a tendency to kind of step back and look at the big, big picture. And there are four kind of key questions that I think we need to address as we go through this. First of all, what is the problem? And of course, the problem is traffic is moving too fast. Um, what is the cause? And of course, people are traveling too fast. Uh, there are some other causes though, um, that might be worth investigating. For instance, the design of the street, the number of lanes in the street, parking layout in the street, um, whether the landscaping along the street, you know, those, those kinds of issues all contribute to, uh, the traffic and the, and the impact in the area. So now we've gone, gone to sort of another phase, which is, well, what do we think will work? And to me, it might, there's no silver bullet, so this is what I'm saying, is that it's probably a combination of things that would work. And for me, I'm thinking about how we, um, implement these things over time to figure out what works. Um, you know, whether it's a, a speed table, maybe it's changing, maybe, uh, changing the parking on which side that it's allowed, maybe it's using, um, uh, better delineating the lanes, maybe making them narrower. You know, these, some of these things come out of what they call the new urbanist way of thinking of traffic management, where your goal is to promote safety rather than to move traffic. These are all things that are, are, I think, uh, worth looking at. Um, and then of course, the last thing is, you know, what do you pick and what do you, what do you do? So I'm, I'm not opposed to the, um, approaches that are, let's just put up some, uh, stop signs, but I think it's, there's even a bigger picture to take a look at, um, for managing traffic, not only here, but in other parts of the, of the community. One way to do that is something called tactical urbanism, where you, uh, do temporary improvements and see if they work. Or relatively low cost improvements, uh, maybe we're looking at restructuring the road, um, you know, changing the parking, you know, those kinds of things. But, you know, as we're looking at it, let's, you know, take a comprehensive look at it because it really, um, in some ways, the design of the roadway itself is encouraging people to drive fast. And the things that we can do to manage the physical engineering environment will, will, um, help to mitigate against those higher speeds. Ultimately, of course, um, in, in another time and place, people might be more calm, but I can't do anything about that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Trustee Underdunk. Okay, so, uh, Gary, do you have anything you, Joe has weighed in and I don't want to put you on the spot, but since I can't look at you, um, how's your hip? And, uh, do you have anything you want to say? Trustee Rubin had a hip, uh, replacement, um, I think on Monday, so.
Yes, and, uh, I don't have, I don't have my camera on, uh, and, and, um, you should all be grateful. The, I, I'm in agreement with, with the recommendations that you made, President. The, um, um, it, it is a serious issue, um, and at the end of the day, whether the technical engineering, uh, tests are met, first the stop signs and the pedestrian crossings, um, you know, I, I think we need to go, uh, and, and consider, um, what will make everyone be safe and feel safe. And, uh, we should try this out along with increased enforcement measures, which are obviously going to be a part of any solution. I'm concerned about putting temporary things down that might have to be removed in the winter, because what happens then? Does that suddenly mean people are like, oh, great, they're gone and then they start speeding up again? I, I'm sure this will come under the heading no good deed, uh, but I, I do think that we ought to give these things a try and hope it solves the problem, but we ought to continue to monitor to see if we've solved the problem or not, and if not, then we need to take a look at other things. And in the meantime, even if we go forward with those things, I, I agree with, um, uh, Trustee Underdunk, that looking at reshaping the roadway if we can, if it's not a, you know, multi-multi-million dollar project, uh, but something with striping, et cetera, where with the parking, if that would help, great. Um, if, if, if we give the impression that things are narrowed. You know, one thing that hasn't been discussed tonight, and I, and I don't know how, how, what the engineering is behind it or, or, but the notion that even if you can't issue a ticket off of it, if there's a camera there that tells you what your speed is and it's flashing red at you, does that actually help slow traffic? If it does, maybe we should investigate putting a couple of those-
So, so, uh, uh, Trustee Rubin, we think it might help. It's one of the recommendations and, and that's something that the village has been doing. Um, you know, it tells me when I'm going 33, it does. Uh, so, yes, we're going to do that too.
All right, great. And the last thing, um, is, and you all may have this in the, in the, in the presentation, but I, I just didn't see it. I know it works on the highway. I have no, and I know just from practical experience, to be, to be honest. Uh, I have no idea how it works in a community like ours, but lots of times when people see a police car, they slow down, just because. Sometimes even when they're not speeding, their just initial reaction is to take their foot off the gas a little and check their speed. If we have, uh, you know, a car that we could put and park there, is that possibly a helpful, one of the things we could do to further help, not to negate any of the other things that we've talked about?
So I, 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 I mean, we're obviously talking about, because it's the only way we can do it, monitoring the speed is with, uh, having one of our public safety officers over there monitoring the speed. Uh, if, so we're going to do that, but we'll have to figure out how much we can do it and when. Um, if you're talking about a decoy car, um-
I am.
That is not, oh, okay. I mean, that's not a ridiculous idea. Um, if you, in Colorado, if you go over Independence Pass, there's a town called Twin Lakes and they've had an old empty police car with a fake guy, um, that's been in that car for 20 years and it probably works.
Are you finished, Trustee Rubin?
Yes, thank you.
Is this the right volume?
You're good.
Okay, good. Um, I just wanted to, uh, agree in ju, in principle with everything that you, um, are proposing. Um, I want to thank you all for being here. I think this is a serious issue and I, I, it's frankly just warms my heart to see people engage in the process. Um, so, thank you for being here and, uh, we are taking these concerns seriously. Um, I am at the 50,000 foot level, struggling a little bit with the fact that we are, we asked for these studies and they made these recommendations and then we're doing something different than what the recommendations say, but I think taking all things together, um, this is the best place to start, acknowledging that it's something that we're going to try and hope that it does the trick, but if not, we'll be monitoring and, and making sure that, um, we look for another solution. Uh, and then, um, with an eye towards a little further down the road, I, I appreciate, uh, Trustee Underdunk's suggestion, suggestion that we maybe take a more, um, comprehensive look at traffic across the boards, because as we've been hearing from neighbors and talking about these different, uh, scenarios, you know, it's, it's hard to avoid, at, at least for me, thinking about, well, if the cars, for example, were rerouted, where do they go? They go somewhere else, uh, and then it, it's a problem for someone else. Um, and rather than just saying, oh, so we can't do that, it's like, well, then, then what's the, what's the larger way to address that? And I think it's possible that in some of Trustee Underdunk's, um, suggestions, there might be some room for that, but I, that's a, that's a bigger picture sort of thing. So, uh, you have my support.
So thanks for those, uh, comments, uh, all trustees. Let me say, um, the main thing, I mean, we got a series of recommendations, we're doing some of them, uh, now, we're going to consider some later, maybe. Um, the main thing we got from the study was we found out what the story really was, because everything was anecdotal until we knew that. Um, I mean, I had a, I'm on Hofelder every day and I had a view of what it was like and, uh, I was mistaken. And, you know, what, what we, what we try to do as a village and what, what the staff did, uh, which I am grateful for is, they said, okay, let's find out. Let's find out what the story is and figure out what to do. Um, so, I, one of the things I try to do in, in this job is I listen to the board members and then I try to summarize and then we can give direction. So our current plan, subject to hearing from the folks in the audience, uh, I think we'll ask the village manager and village staff to, uh, look to put in two stop signs and two crosswalks, one at Sunset, one at Orchard. In addition, we'll talk to public safety about increasing our monitoring and in addition, we'll try to continue with the, uh, speed, um, uh, monitoring that we have out there and, uh, we'll keep an eye on it and we will be happy to hear from the residents, uh, as to what they think. And if we need to do more, we will look at doing more. We are, you know, nobody's gotten killed on Hofelder, nobody's gotten seriously hurt. We, we don't actually have a lot of accidents. Um, maybe we've just been lucky. We want to do as much as we can within reason to keep up the streak. So that, not having heard from everybody yet, that's what I think we would do. Um, but if there are any folks in the audience, um-
Mr. President, one, one additional comment before you start that.
Okay.
One of the, um, recommendations that came back from the neighbors was something we have been monitoring and, and, uh, our friends, the Lewans at the corner, uh, are actively helping us monitor that and that, and that is the, the through truck traffic on Hofelder. We installed signage on Dundee-
That microphone's not working well.
You know, I've never, never been told I couldn't be heard. That's a first, so. It's too loud. I'll step back. But just, just a comment, uh, question from the neighbors that came in their, in their recommendations was that we further pursue that, particularly for rerouting traffic entering the Wesley Hofelder corridor from Green Bay Road and, and we, we strongly endorse that and we will be working to improve the signage at the Dundee end. Uh, for, for the most part, we've seen significant improvement there, but we need to, we need to do the same on, on Green Bay Road. Uh, and that doesn't mean zero truck traffic, because trucks that have a purpose and a destination within that neighborhood, uh, will, will continue to travel, but we, we do see a fair amount of, of truck traffic that is either lost or their ultimate destination is Lake Cook and beyond, and so, uh, we have found those, those signs to be effective and we will look to, to augment, uh, what, what's out there now. So I just wanted to-
Thank you.
Add that to the discussion.
Good idea and good idea from the residents. So, um, you know, I, I came to your meeting when we had it last week. We have read, I, I appreciate, we all appreciate the letters and the communications, we pay attention to all of that stuff. So I think we've heard you. I know we're not doing everything everybody's asked for. If, if there's anyone that wants to say something now to try to guess do something different, you are welcome to do it. If you choose not to, that doesn't mean you're forever barred from saying you didn't go far enough or you got it wrong or something. So, uh, with that, is there anyone that wants to comment on what we're about to do on the Hofelder Road Corridor? Come on up and tell us who you are and you have, and let, you have three minutes if you're, for you, and six minutes if you're for a big crowd. And, and what's your name?
Randy Strickland.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Strickland.
We're trying to get our points across and it's great to hear that what we found from the neighborhood and our sort of analytics of the study made some sense to people and we're pleased that they listened. And we came into this, there were a number of people who said, listen, I'm asking speed, but let's just, if we can stop sign and crosswalk, we will be happy. And I'm confident that they are going to make a difference and that the, the kind of sign, that as I've been thinking about this and looking at it, with the signage that you see around other parts with, you know, yellow signs that say stop ahead, you know, a young child like this, plus the idea that I had that was on, on Sheridan, that the sign, the electronic sign for speed, you know, flashes red if it's over 25, and it's green if it's under 25, 25. Awesome idea, but I just want to thank Andrew, who helped me to get the voice out to people and, and, and help you from listening, so that we really appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you for coming. We, we are happy to hear from our residents. We are, we're just volunteers, we're trying to get it right. That's, that's why we're here. Anybody else up? We have one more. Uh, come on, come on up, tell, come on up, tell us who you are.
My name is Stan Lewin, I live on 1239.
No, you're, you're good, you're good. I just, there was somebody else too, so. No, you're, you're good, you're good, I just, there was somebody else too, so. That's the tribute, smile, look, photo done.
I should, I should start with a thank you very much, because I've owned this for a while now. Although I won't fall into the quote-unquote head category, so I just want to throw one thing out, not relating the Hofelder Road specifically, but for our friends who live all along Wesley, the pitch of that hill, when people start coming down there, heading toward the hole, of course, and the stop sign, both of those, which are, you know, which are well-known in my part anyway, because they can see everything coming in, coming down there. I do worry about all those homes that are all way down, closer to the golf course. These guys are taking awesome speed coming down the street, and I do worry, I know, friends of my kids, they just moved in, one house, sort of right across the street, they have little babies now, but they're good to go. And I do worry, as we, we're doing this wonderful thing for the golf course, we're gonna get continued, probably more traffic happening out there, for hours of the night. And just, just go watch out, and just throw it out there so that people can hear, because that's not gonna get the better of it, or like.
Thank you, we'll pay attention. Come on up, tell us your name.
This is Gus Rodriguez, I live on Sunset and Hofelder. First of all, thank you so much for your service. I can tell you, there's no questions of problems, we think of that, we had two cars end up on our front lawn, we had to put, older, it weighs one ton, in the corner there, to try to go down, cars, and, and a long way. It's so alarming, we're looking at the data from this study, and when I looked at the criteria for always stops, I could write it down, it's the first time I saw this slide, I remember the meeting. I think, well, why would we not qualify for always stop? And maybe the visibility's good there, but you have to look at those in context. So, when you look at the data from the study, it's quite alarming. Sixty miles an hour is thirty yards per second, if you Google it, the conversion. So, in two seconds, you've gone more than a half of a football field playing, and someone's gonna get hurt. So, we're lucky enough that that's happened, but I'm so glad that you guys are seeing, like, seeing the problem.
Thank you. Yeah, all right, can you tell us your name?
Hi, I'm Shawna Hall, and I'm at eleven thirty-nine.
Hi, I'm Sean McCall and I'm at eleven seventy-nine. Um, I'll echo everybody. Um, I echo everybody. Thanks. If you could be able to solve his, um, on the street. And I just have a question about, uh, the stop signs and crosswalks. Not in demand by any stretch, but just, uh, something that is not in process with, uh, flashing stops. With the crosswalks. I don't know if that's a thing that's still on the table. And I don't even know if like something like this exists, but, um, to your point about people going through, um, stop signs. A lot of people are, even if they're home, they're driving. And I, I just worry about, um, drawing people to crosswalks and then, uh, having somebody blow a stop sign. Is there a mechanism to make the stop more obvious when somebody's crossing? So like, are there, um, like, is there a button to eliminate flashing when somebody's crossing? Or can we attach a countdown or, you know, like cross, you know, crossing signal or, uh, crossing history? I don't know if those would exist.
So let me, let me, I, I, maybe I should, for the expert, let me say what I know. Because typically, there are, there is such a thing in which you have typically an uncontrolled crosswalk. And you push a button and there's a flashing light. But that is almost always with an uncontrolled crosswalk. So what we're doing instead is putting in a stop sign. Now, you know, there is always a risk that people are going to blow a stop sign. But, um, I would be concerned, you know, and I don't know what the date is on this. But I would be concerned if we had a stop sign and one of those flashing things. That would be an invitation for people to blow the stop sign unless the light was flashing. And we don't want to give that invitation. So what we thought about was, okay, we could have a stop sign at Orchard, which is halfway along the street. And because it's so close to Dundee, we could have a flashing thing at Sunset. But we decided, nah. Part of the reason we decided that, we've been thinking about this. Part of the reason we decided is because there's a stoplight at Dundee. And if, if somebody, that's a, it's a short light. I know that because I'm, I'm on my bicycle in the morning and I, kills me when I miss the green light. Well, if somebody's driving, we don't want them seeing the green light when they finish the stop at Orchard and then speeding up to make the light. So we thought, we hope we're right, to put in a stop sign instead of a flashing pedestrian. That's our current plan. And again, you folks will tell us and we'll be looking if this doesn't work. And then we'll think about Plan B. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Hello, I'm Andrew Schrock. I'm fifty-one of our district. So, um, I became a citizen just last year and now I participate in democracy, which is incredible for me. Thank you so much. Seriously, I'd like to say huge thank you to all my neighbors from Hohfelder. Together, we are incredible. And thank you to all of you for doing this and for listening to us and for helping us and for doing us. It was only eleven months, but I'm glad that we'll see progress on this and we'll all be happy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So they probably don't include this in the naturalization classes, but you could, you could read up on the Glencoe caucus. Because, um, we were all elected unanimously, which sounds a little Soviet, but there's, but there is a caucus. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Come on up, come on up, come on up.
Just one question.
That's what I was going to ask. What was the time?
I can, I can, I can respond to that. So one of the things I just asked the Public Works Director is, uh, we have a, an existing contract that the board approved earlier this year uh, for sidewalk replacements in a variety of locations in town. One of the things we're looking at is trying to augment that contract to include the concrete work that would have to be done for the crosswalks. Um, you can't just, you can't just paint them. We would need the, uh, the ramps that go along with it. Um, that work is scheduled to really kind of kick off in August and September. So my expectation and the stop signs themselves are relatively straightforward. We'd also have to, um, uh, work with, uh, we have an existing contract for street markings. Again, to refresh them in a number of locations. And we, we're going to talk to that contractor as well about, um, being able to rearrange how that, um, how that contract structured for the year uh, to maintain our budgetary restrictions. So that's, that's the plan. My expectation is that we can do this relatively, relatively soon.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Okay, tell us who you are.
I'm Ollie Shire at four seven zero Westley Road.
Welcome.
I just want to echo what Stan said because from the Westley roadside, that intersection is really troubling. The, the Westley and Hohfelder, and Westley Green Bay. Those stop signs are completely optional to most people who drive to the road. And I worry about that the development, if the development, um, Hoover Estate ever goes more well, then it's going to increase the gas and the traffic. So my hope would be, we don't know if people are going to respect these stop signs at Hohfelder, but we already know that they don't respect the stop signs that are lights. And my hope would be that we could put the stop sign flashing lights on the side to those vehicles that went. And I don't know about the Sunset Orchard, but at the, um, Hohfelder Wesley intersection, I'm really wishful for flashing stop signs.
We will look at that. We will look at that. And thanks for your service on the school board. Yes, ma'am. Come on.
People come, arrowing down Westley Road. I'm sure you've driven down, it goes down. Once they go through that stop sign, they just keep walking down. No idea about that at home. But if you're doing things for Hohfelder, it makes sense to consider doing some things for Westley Road to slow down that traffic.
So, we'll, we'll, we're going to look at all of this with, because we're, we're looking at obviously a golf course improvement. And yeah, I, I'm aware of this. We obviously want people to stop at that stop sign, um, that exists. But we'll look at that too. The only, the only, I just want to say that we only have so many public safety officers. And we're down, we're desperately trying to hire, just like everybody else in the country, but we're down. So, you know, if we, if we have somebody, uh, down at Wesley and Fairfield, that maybe we're not going to have somebody at, uh, Hohfelder. So, but we're going to try to manage it and I, I'm sure you're right.
If you think about, about safety officers, very many, if we're trying to do construction at Hohfelder, makes sense to consider doing some sort of, um, if you're doing, uh, ski delts or whatever, the last one there. Do something at Wesley Road so that people can slow down. It's the same type of construction. Not across the road.
Okay.
It's just to slow them down because people are not walking into the golf course.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Tell us who you are. Is that from Aspen?
Um, Stacy Michael and I'm at twelve forty Hohfelder. That's the corner of Hohfelder Wesley. So I am echoing concerns of, of the particular stoplights. Um, I have a question to make. The first question is, with the potential development of Hoover Estate, there was conversation about the exactly at Wesley Green Bay. Is that still up in discussion? Or is that dependent upon the development of community?
There are intersect, significant intersection improvements that are a component of that development. That development at this moment has not moved forward. I don't recall there being a stoplight that was in the final subdivision approvals. But there was a significant change in the orientation of that intersection, narrowing the mouth of Wesley Road and, and aligning it with what is the new street that would be going into the Hoover Estate. So it would change quite a bit the turning motion, because that was a, that was a concern relative to Wesley and Green Bay well before even the Hoover Estate discussions began. I don't believe it was a stoplight, but I do believe there were other components, uh, rectangular rapid flashing beacons for pedestrian crossings um, and a number of other pieces and parts. But that, that project, as far as we know, is still stalled. And that would be a component of, of when they actually got started with that work.
Okay. And then the statement I wanted to make was, I think that there's a little misunderstanding about all the traffic that's coming to Hohfelder. There's plenty of traffic that has cut through Hohfelder, so we. So where, there was concern raised about people going to Sunset instead, um, in finding different avenues. Between, you know, Wesley and Dundee, I think we have to take into account that if there were less desirable to take Hohfelder, um, a lot of those people that live in Hohfelder would perhaps take Lake Hohfelder, Lake Green and not drive up Green Bay, go on Hohfelder and get Dundee in order to avoid some of their traffic. There's no question that that is kind of, uh, increasing the ICA traffic on Hohfelder every day for nineteen years. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? And again, you're not barred for the rest of your life to come back and tell us. One more? Okay. And who are you?
I'm related to this area. Thank you so much for taking the time. For helping us. Asking this role this year. I think, uh, I think my one concern, like, there's one thing to say. Like imagine, uh, these are some of the things I'm telling them about. So the advantage is, how many cars are going to go thirty miles an hour, or fifty miles an hour? And I think it's concerning, right? We have so much cars a day, a couple of quarters. We have thirty cars a week going to go fifty miles an hour. It's been a season. And we give it nine tickets, six to ten. Thirty day, one of us, is this year, and ninety six to come. It just doesn't make sense. So I understand that, uh, we have, uh, control, some other, uh, he uses like a bet. But so just, I just want to make sure that the traffic is less, because a lot of, a lot of people, people go through stop signs. Probably that's an enforcement. We need to enforce this, the speed laws, enforce the stop signs. So people do not do this, right? So I really do hope that we actually do people that are giving a try, right? And we take it. So people don't, people just, uh, so that's why I'm asking.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you, everyone. And again, I, um, on behalf of the board members, we are grateful for your engagement. And, and our, our doors, uh, and those village staff's doors are always open for, for, uh, your commentary. So thank you. Okay. 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 Okay, okay.
So, hey Sammy. Gary is saying he can't hear when anybody's speaking into that microphone. And it doesn't sound like, he said it doesn't seem like.
Yes, 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 yes.
All right.
No, that was a really true.
So, uh, I'm going to, we're going to turn to the next, uh, meeting. Thank you, everybody. Um, we have, we have more, um, to cover. And Sammy, we can hear you.
All right.
So the next item is the review of the twenty twenty-three community survey results. By the way, some of which we got to reference while we were talking to po- potential public safety directors yesterday. Because, uh, one of the things we learned, uh, was how happy everybody in Glencoe is about their public safety. So I guess, Carrie, you can't leave because things are good now.
They were always good.
Uh, all right. So Sammy's going to present.
All right. Good evening. Um, so as you're all aware, in early twenty twenty-three, the village partnered with survey firm ETC Institute to administer a survey to better, better understand the community's satisfaction with core village services and to gain insight into the community's priorities relating to special projects initiatives. The last two community surveys were also conducted by ETC in twenty fifteen, twenty nineteen. And so secondarily, the survey was also designed as a benchmarking tool to measure improvements or declines in service area satisfaction levels. Survey administration is in line with the village's current strategic plan, which includes an initiative to evaluate and implement community-engaged initiatives to determine satisfaction with those services and future community priorities. In March, ETC mailed the seven-page survey to all Glencoe households. Survey respondents were given the option to mail back their response or take the survey online via the provided link or the QR code, which was also with the mailing. Um, our goal was to collect from four hundred households. We exceeded that with four hundred and, five hundred and forty-two households responding, representing approximately seventeen percent of the community. And the dots on that map, which is kind of small, um, indicate where, what areas of Glencoe responded to that, to our survey. Although the quantity of responses were slightly lower than previous surveys, um, the response rate of seventeen percent of our community is so much higher than ETC's average, which is around twelve percent. Um, a lot has changed, both externally and internally, um, both nationally and worldwide. Externally, the world faced the COVID-nineteen pandemic, as we're all aware, which vastly changed the way all of us live our lives to this day, as well as how we govern. Nationally, issues such as the current social climate and discourse regarding law enforcement have shaped the way people do government, even at a local level. Internally, the members that make up the village board have changed since twenty nineteen. And the village has also seen several staffing changes across the organization. And finally, multiple referenda have been passed by residents to fund, um, significant infrastructure improvements. Despite all of this, results of the survey were still overwhelmingly positive. Um, compared to, um, the twenty nineteen results, satisfaction ratings improved or stayed the same in a hundred and two of the hundred and fifteen areas that were measured. Of the areas with decreases in satisfaction, only one saw a significant decrease, which ETC considers a decrease of greater than negative five percent. Um, and we'll touch on that area later. Um, some key survey findings. Um, overall, residents have an excellent perception of the village. Um, as in twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen, ninety-nine percent of all residents that completed the survey rated Glencoe as an excellent or good place to live. Ninety-eight percent rated the quality of life in Glencoe and Glencoe as a place to raise children as excellent or good, which was a two percent increase since twenty nineteen. Ninety-eight percent of residents have a positive perception of the village and feel safe in Glencoe, which was an increase in satisfaction as well. And ninety-seven percent satisfy, are satisfied of village services, which saw a five percent increase. And then seventy-nine percent believe Glencoe is moving in the right direction, um, which is a three percent increase in twenty nineteen and a fourteen percent increase since twenty fifteen. There are several areas that had significant improvement, um, just to name a few. One area with a noticeable, noticeable increase in twenty nineteen was Glencoe as a place to work, with a fifteen percent satisfaction increase. Um, we believe it's possible this increase is due to the fact that there's a growing number of village businesses in the community, as well as the number of people who are working remotely and utilizing, um, public spaces to, to conduct their work on a daily basis. Um, eighty-nine percent, which is a ten percent increase since twenty nineteen, were very satisfied or satisfied with the overall effectiveness of the location. With respondents listing inside Glencoe and village weekly e-news as the two main sources of information for village services. Satisfaction with the village's permitting process, increase in satisfaction by eleven percent. We believe this directly correlates to the change in, um, the on, changing to an online permitting process during the pandemic. And satisfaction with utility services increased in all areas, protect, particularly stormwater management by an increase of seven percent. This increase in satisfaction, we believe, directly correlates with the significant infrastructure investments that we've made in our stormwater management system over the last several years. All of the last three surveys have asked questions related to several special initiatives. Um, this year, we asked additional questions regarding the environment, environmental sustainability and, um, diversity, equity and inclusion. In regards to environmental sustainability, areas that were rated with the highest importance were protection of water, ravines and trees, recycling, waste management and composting, reduction of single-use plastics, installation of rain gardens and resource conservation to water and energy. Um, and then when asked about diversity, equity and inclusion in Glencoe, ninety-four percent said they felt welcome in Glencoe. Eighty-five percent feel the village as a government is welcoming and inclusive. Eighty-four percent believe the village treats all individuals equally. And seventy-four percent feel the community recognizes and respects diverse people. There are several investment priorities to consider for the next several years, which are based on several factors, such as areas with lower satisfaction compared to other areas within the survey. Areas with significant increases in satisfaction, which is considered a, a change of negative five percent or more. And areas specifically ranked higher when residents were asked to prioritize community services and attributes. Areas with lower satisfaction compared to other areas included Glencoe as a place to retire. Fifty-eight percent were, were satisfied, um, but this was still an increase since twenty fifteen. Variety of shopping and dining, forty-four to forty-five percent said they were satisfied. But still, this was an increase since the twenty fifteen survey. Um, the area throughout the survey with the most significant decrease in satisfaction since twenty nineteen, meaning a decrease of five percent or more, um, was the enforcement of traffic laws, which dropped by negative fifteen percent. Although the satisfaction level is still considered very high at seventy-five percent, it is an area for continued improvement. When residents were asked to prioritize maintenance areas within the village, the top three services they prioritized were village streets, the downtown and sidewalks. And then when they were asked to prioritize, um, overall community priorities from a list of service, various services and attributes, the areas that were deemed very high or high priorities included overall quality of life, crime prevention, quality of services provided, a balanced village budget, flood prevention and stormwater management. Um, in, in addition to the quantitative questions that were asked, um, respondents were also asked to respond to various free response comments if they, if they wished. Although many comments were positive, the most frequent negative responses do mirror the areas that had lower satisfaction levels in the quantitative data, such as parking availability and the lack of affordable housing options and places to retire. Um, and even more exciting news, we are the second-time winners of ETC's Leading the Way Award, um, which recognizes local government that ranked in the top ten percent of all communities in the United States in regard to resident satisfaction with the overall, overall quality of local government services, customer service and the value provided for local taxes, local taxes and fees. Um, we ranked number one among all communities' ETC surveys, um, in twenty categories. And the award quotes that the village of Glencoe is truly setting the standard in many areas. So, next steps. Um, this presentation is obviously over, an overview of high-level takeaways from the survey results. Um, we encourage the board and all curious residents to take time and dig further into the results. In addition to administering the survey and evaluating the results, ETC also developed an interactive dashboard, which, where staff and residents may dig into the data on a more granular level, comparing results to previous surveys, as well as benchmarks the regional and national standard. This dashboard will be made available on the village's website soon. The results of the survey were ultimately exceptionally good, but there's always room for improvement and work to do to ensure we continue to deliver the highest quality of services possible. In the coming weeks, we'll begin to share the results with the community at large via the website webpage and will launch a social media campaign to educate the community on the high-level takeaways. Results will be used to support future budget comprehensive plan and strategic plan discussions, as well as other planning efforts. Additionally, results will be used internally with staff teams to discuss operational changes, review opportunities for improvement, review customer service standards and highlight areas where progress is needed. That is all I have, so I will open it up to questions, comments.
Sammy, thank you for the report. Obviously, these are great results. As much as maybe we would like to think that, oh, this is because of this superb village board, I think the truth is, it's because of a super, a superb village staff, many of whom are sitting in this room. So I just, um, thank you for making Glencoe a great place to live. You know, we are eternally grateful for this superb performance. We have, you know, anybody want to say anything? We have five minutes until we're supposed to start our next meeting. We're also supposed to eat. Unless anybody has anything else, um, is there a motion to adjourn our committee of the whole meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion, Carrie.
Aye.
Thank you. And, um, okay, let's.